Good morning and welcome to elected members and members of the public and press to those watching today's meeting online. Members, before we move on to today's business, I'm sure you would like me to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate St Johnson's Football Club on successfully bringing the Scottish League Cup to Perth. This is the second major trophy they've brought home, having won the Scottish Cup just under seven years ago. They once again defied the odds. Members, I have offered Chairman Steve Brown a civic reception to honour St Johnson Football Club, and I'm pleased to say that he has accepted my invitation on behalf of Perth and Conroth Council. Obviously, this will have to be put in hold until such time as it's safe to do so. Can I ask if there are any apologies for today's meeting and for the roll call to be taken? Are there any apologies?
Thank you, Provost. Good morning, all councillors. Provost, I've not received any apologies for today's meeting. If I can just clarify for the benefit of any of the public watching, we have had some major technical issues this morning that are not confined just to Perth and Conroth Council. There is a national issue that we're trying to resolve that has delayed the start of the meeting. However, we're confident now that issues have been resolved and that we are able to proceed. I believe that all members have joined the meeting, but what I will now do is do a roll call to ask all members to confirm that they are present in the meeting. Councillor Ahern?
Present.
Councillor Bailey?
Present.
Deputy Provost Beard?
Present.
Councillor Barnacle?
Present.
Councillor Liz Barrett?
Present.
Councillor Peter Barrett?
Present.
Councillor Braun?
Present.
Councillor Brock?
Present.
Councillor Audrey Coates? Councillor Audrey Coates? I'll come back. Councillor Harry Coates? Again, I'll come back to councillor Coates. Councillor Donaldson?
Present.
Councillor Drysdale?
Present.
Councillor Duff?
Present.
Councillor Forbes?
Present.
Councillor Gray?
Present.
Councillor Ellingworth?
Present.
Councillor James?
Present.
Councillor Jarvis?
Okay.
Councillor Ling?
Present.
Councillor Lyle?
Present.
Councillor Massey?
Present.
Councillor McCall?
Present.
Councillor McCall?
Present.
Councillor McDade?
Present.
Councillor McEwen?
Present.
Councillor Parrott?
Present.
Councillor Over?
Present.
Councillor Purvis?
Hi Angus.
Hi Angus.
Councillor Purvis? I'll come back to councillor Purvis. Councillor Rebek?
Yeah.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Councillor Robertson?
Present.
Councillor Sarwar?
Present.
Councillor Shires?
Present.
Councillor Simpson?
Present.
Councillor Stewart?
Present.
Councillor Waters?
Present.
Councillor Williamson?
Present.
And councillor Wilson?
Present.
How do I do that?
Now, councillor Audrey Coates, is that yourself, I believe?
Okay, here we go. Right, okay. Scott, Harry and I are both in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Purvis, are you able to confirm?
Sorry, I had an urgent phone call that I had to take, so apologies, I couldn't participate in the roll call shortly earlier. Thanks.
Thank you. Provost, we now have all members present, so if I could just ask all members to mute their microphones and Provost, you can now proceed.
Thank you, Scott. Item two, declarations of interest. Can I ask, are there any declarations of interest in respect of items of business on the agenda today? Councillor McEwen?
I have a non-financial interest in live active leisure.
Thank you. Have there any others? Councillor Braun?
Thank you, Provost. I have a non-financial interest in live active leisure.
Thank you. Councillor McDade?
I have an interest as a voting member of the Integrated Joint Board.
Councillor Rebek, Provost?
Councillor Rebek?
Yeah, I have a non-financial declaration of interest as a trustee of live active leisure. Thank you.
Councillor Drysdale?
Thank you, Provost. I have a declaration of non-financial interest as a member of Perth and Conroth Integration Joint Board.
Councillor Purvis?
Thank you, Provost. I have a non-financial interest as a director of Horse Cross Arts and a non-financial interest as a voting member of Perth and Conroth Integration Joint Board.
Thank you. Councillor Forbes?
I'm going to declare a non-financial interest in T-Side contracts, just in case it comes up today. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you. Councillor Ahern?
Councillor Ahern?
A non-financial interest as a board member of Culture Perth and Conroth.
Thank you.
Councillor Williamson, sorry, Provost?
Have I missed anybody?
Councillor Williamson.
Apologies.
Provost, so I have a non-financial declaration of interest in T-Side contracts, in case it comes up.
Thank you. Councillor Parrott?
Non-financial interest, Culture Perth and Conroth.
Thank you. Councillor Duff?
Thanks, Provost. A non-financial interest as a voting member of the IGB.
Councillor Jarvis?
A declaration of non-financial interest in T-Side contracts and also CPK.
Thank you. And councillor Pover?
An un-financial interest in Perth Festival of the Arts.
Thank you. Councillor McCall?
Thank you, Provost. I have a non-financial interest as a member of Perth or T-Side Contracts Board, or sorry, Joint Committee.
Now, have I missed anybody? I think we're up to date.
Yes, you have, Provost. Councillor Donaldson, I have a non-financial interest as a director of Horse Cross.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no more declarations of interest, we'll move to item three.
Councillor Parrott, Provost?
Councillor Parrott?
Thank you, Provost, and apologies for raising this question. I wonder if the head of legal could give us some advice. It was always my understanding that if you declared an interest, then you had to have weighed up the issue upon which you were declaring an interest and not to declare either anticipatory or provisional declarations of interest, which may not arise.
That is correct, but it's an academic point, councillor, because even declaring an interest does not preclude you from participating in the discussion on the budget on these matters. So, membership of other bodies that are affiliated with the council will not preclude you from taking part in the discussion.
Are you happy with that, councillor Parrott?
Thank you, Provost.
Okay, we'll move now on to the item three, the revenue budget. The report to be considered is report 2123 by Stuart Mackenzie, head of finance. I would like to remind members of the process that I set out previously on how I intend to deal with this report, and I will shortly be asking for both the motion and any amendments to be electronically circulated to members and spoken to, with the movers and secounders having a combined total of up to 25 minutes to speak. The motion and amendments will also be added to the meeting agenda page of the council website at the appropriate point. Calling this, there will then be a one-hour break for lunch, followed by a further one-hour recess period. And on returning to the meeting in the afternoon, the debate and any voting will then take place as necessary, followed by the consideration of the report on the reserve strategy. Can I now ask the head of finance to introduce the report? Stuart?
Thank you, Provost, and good morning, councillors. I will keep my remarks brief, as I appreciate that council will wish to move quickly into debate on the budget. I've also had the opportunity to brief elected members on the revenue budget report in advance of this meeting, and colleagues have been supporting the work of member budget review groups since the autumn. The budget process has been different this year, with council having already considered and approved a council tax freeze for 2122 at its meeting on the 24th of February. Budget report has been updated on this basis, and members are asked to consider both the budget pressures and savings detailed in the appendices to the report and the funding strategy and specific recommendations made out within the report in setting the council's revenue budget for 202122. Subsequent to the issue of this report, on the 8th of March, the Cabinet Secretary for Finance announced that agreement had been reached with Scottish Greens Party and the Scottish Liberal Democrats to support the 2021 Scottish budget. The Scottish budget, which was approved yesterday, now included following additional measures. Introduction of free school meals for all primary school pupils by August 2022, with £49.75 million being made available in the next financial year to support the phase rollout of free school meals. £17 million for the extension of concessional travel to the under-22s. £40 million of capital funding, £15 million for active travel, £10 million for energy efficiency, £10 million for biodiversity, and £5 million for emissions reduction in the agricultural sector. £100 million funding for pandemic support payment. This will comprise a payment of £130 to households in receipt of council tax reduction, and two payments of £100 each to families of children in receipt of free school meals. Families in receipt of council tax reduction and free school meals will be eligible to receive both payments. Revision to the 202122 public sector pay policy to include an £800 pay increase for public sector workers earning less than £25,000, and a 2% uplift for those earning up to £40,000. For those earning above £40,000, the policy remains unchanged. £120 million for new community mental health services, £60 million to help schools catch up on learning, and £20 million for classroom support through the Pupil Equity Fund. £15 million for economic recovery in the North East of Scotland, and the £90 million of funding provided for the council tax fees in the 2122 settlement has now been baselined within the budget. Political group leaders have been advised of this update in advance of today's council meeting. There is no confirmation at present of the council's allocation of the funding being made available to support these measures. The 202122 revenue budget is being set in a period of unprecedented challenge and uncertainty for the council due to the ongoing impact of COVID-19. Length of the council's reserves position, the report recommends the use of non-recurring funds to achieve a balanced budget and provide some capacity to manage financial uncertainty in the coming financial year. The level of uncertainty of our future income and expenditure, the use of non-recurring funding, and the ongoing challenge of responding to COVID and the supporting renewal are all required to be considered by elected members in determining the council's budget priorities. Elected members are therefore requested to continue to adopt a prudent approach in the consideration of the revenue budget. Once approved, the 2122 revenue budget will be kept under close review. If I may take this opportunity to thank both my own team, executive officer team colleagues, and colleagues from across the council for their support in the preparation and update of revenue budget, and in supporting scrutiny of the council's elected member budget review groups. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you, Stuart. Now, we'll come to questions on the report. I see councillor Drysdale has a question.
Thank you, Provost, and thank you, Mr Mackenzie, for your report and update. Apologies if I missed it. I don't think you made reference to the fact that the Scottish government has now agreed to baseline the council tax freeze as well. So, any concerns that there may have been previously regarding the council tax fees are now resolved, and that will be carried forward into future years. Can you confirm, please?
Thank you for your question, councillor Drysdale. I did reference this in my opening introductory remarks, but you're absolutely correct. That money has now been baselined within the budget and will be carried forward into future years.
Apologies, I missed it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Barnacle?
Yes, thanks, Provost. I have two questions for Scott. First of all, in paragraph 2.2 of the report, it mentions Barnet consequentials, increased funding for Scotland by 1.2 billion, and in paragraph 10.7, you mentioned the Scottish budget that took place, the expected changes. So, my question from those two things, and you recently outlined the, just recently, the Scottish budget details, is there any further LA funding coming from either of these sources other than what we know already? That's the first question. And the second question?
Barnacle, can I just remind you that we were having one question, and we would have taken it at the end, depending how many questions we were going to have, because we need to give everybody an opportunity to speak, and I'll put you down at the end as we've got time. That's okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
Thank you. Councillor, I've got councillor Drysdale, councillor Barnacle, sorry, councillor Donaldson it is.
Thank you, Provost.
Apologies to you. Apologies to councillor Donaldson. You wish me to respond to councillor Barnacle's question?
Yes.
Provost, do you wish me to address councillor Barnacle's question? Yes, well, I mean, sorry, I beg your pardon. Sorry, I went dead for a second. Thank you, councillor Barnacle. In terms of additional local government funding beyond the announcements in the Scottish budget, not that I am aware of. However, I understand that the Cabinet Secretary yesterday did note that there may be further announcements, depending on what comes through in Barnet consequentials subsequently.
Okay.
Thank you, Stuart.
Councillor Donaldson?
Thank you, Provost, and grateful to Stuart Mackenzie for the update that he has given from the events of the last two days at Holyrood. Could I just ask, Stuart, when, with all the information we have here, just when that will be, because you stated no information is available as yet, that's understandable given the timeframe, as to how funding will be allocated, could you give an indication as to when we might know on that, and when the information we have in front of us today can be updated? Because I think we're operating, and unfortunately, had it been the 17th of March, this meeting, we might have had that information to hand.
Thank you, councillor Donaldson, for your question. My understanding is that the finance circular, which would provide the detail at an individual authority level, will be updated on the 18th of March. I received that information this morning.
So, just to follow up on that, then, when do you hope that councillors will get an updated indication of the overall situation? Because these are quite significant amounts, and it just does, and I've got a number of areas, change the parameters. We have a council meeting, for instance, on the, I think it's on the, at the end of March.
I'd hope we will do so by the time of the council meeting at the end of March, councillor Donaldson.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rebek?
Thank you, Provost. It was just a question, a particular aspect of the budget, if it's appropriate at this point. The school clothing budget, I believe that is overspent this year, and I'm just wondering if I can confirm that, and if so, by how much?
Thank you, councillor Rebek. I think my colleague on the call, he may be able to ask you a question directly.
Thank you.
I vindicated, Provost, that I'm able to respond to that, and I'll just, the clothing grant budget that we have, councillor Rebek, is £167,000, and it's actually currently overspent by approximately £46,000 at this point in time.
Thank you, thank you, much appreciated.
Okay. Councillor Massey? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Provost. My question is in relation to early years childcare funding. Do we know the revenue funding that Perth and Conroth Council have received from the Scottish government this year, and how much in total have we received, both in terms of revenue and capital funding in respect of the 1140 hours expansion?
Thank you for the question, councillor Massey. I'm not sure I've got that information to hand. It should be reflected in the finance circular, which is attached to the report. If you can bear with me, perhaps some colleagues can do some quick addition, come back to you, response to that, but I don't have that figure to hand. My colleague, Sheena Devlin, is able to respond.
Councillor Massey, I can check that information and get that to you and put that in the chat. And I would just need to look that up just now, although my colleague Greg Boland may actually have that information to hand. But if not, we can get that very, very quickly and put that in the chat for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Question from councillor Stuart, Provost?
Hang on, my mute has gone funny. Right, I'm back on. Councillor Stuart?
My question is in relation to the adult social work and social care contributions policy and the review of that. At paragraph 615 of the report, the council is being asked to delay implementation of the review of the policy to the 1st of April next year. But then, in paragraph 619, there's an indication that the provision of non-recurring support at this stage assumes that the policy will be in place. That may be subject to revision following the Scottish government or Scottish Parliament's consideration of the FELI report. I think my question is, during the course of the coming year, should circumstances change, should council not wish to implement that review on the 1st of April next year? Will there be an opportunity to delay or cancel that, depending on circumstances?
Thank you. Is Sheena just going to reply on that one?
Sorry, Provost. My R was in response to the previous question about early learning and childcare. Thank you.
Okay, just not going away. Stuart, are you responding on that one?
Provost, I don't know if my colleague Gordon Patterson would wish to make me comment, or Jean Smith on the call.
Certainly, I would be happy to, Stuart. Thank you, Provost. Thank you, councillor Stuart, for the question. Yeah, the reference in the papers to the FELI report is a proposal that's been brought forward around the abolition of non-residential charges, which the Scottish government considered three weeks ago now. This will inevitably be considered in Holyrood party manifestos, but it will be for a new government to determine whether or not this has progressed. The proposal that we're bringing forward is that we will continue to do the groundwork in relation to scoping out the potential impact and implications of revision to the contributions policy. But certainly, it would be for council at a future date to make a determination as to whether or not these proposals were implemented or not.
And just to confirm, in terms of my question, there would be the opportunity for council to consider delaying or cancelling altogether that during the period from now until the 1st of April 2022?
That's an option that's available either to the council today or in the course of the year at any point that you would wish to revisit this decision, yes?
Thank you very much for the confirmation. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I don't see any more, oh, I don't see any more question requests. Councillor Barnacle, you had a question? Second question. Councillor Barnacle?
Yes, thanks, Provost. My second question was really for Stuart on paragraph 1020. In light of what is said about pay increases for public sector workers per the Scottish budget, is the basis of the allowance on pay at 3%? What is the basis of that? I mean, is that a sound figure?
Thank you, Provost. Happy to pick up on that question, councillor Barnacle. So, the 3% is what was approved by council in setting a provisional budget. That was based on the previous pay settlement. The current pay settlement has now elapsed, so that's subject to negotiation. In terms of the public sector pay policy set by the Scottish government, that doesn't actually apply to local government pay settlements. It may influence and it may inform, but it isn't actually binding on local authority pay settlement, either for the teaching unions or for non-teaching staff. So, that's subject to national negotiation. So, the provision in the budget is simply what was provided for previously and what's in the approved revenue budget, provisional revenue budget.
Thank you, Stuart.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? No. Can we now go to, can I ask councillor Lyle, do you have a motion to move? Can I ask you to speak to the motion and for this to be circulated?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Provost. Yes, if it's possible, if committee services could circulate the motion to members at this point. And Provost, before I begin, the main content of the motion, I would just like to reveal and to acknowledge that this is without doubt the most challenging revenue budget that the Perth and Conroth Council has ever set. The unknowns caused by the COVID-19 pandemic are unparalleled. Rather than make knee-jerk reactions without all the facts, we will continue to adopt a prudent approach to a revenue budget setting in keeping with the reputation of this administration. Provost, this is why we are recognising over £8 million of financial pressure on the revenue budget on a non-recurring basis for one year only. This covers additional expenditure, reduced income, delayed savings, and some as yet known, as yet unknown, demand pressures. We will fund this by adopting the measures outlined within the report. This will add over £10 million to the COVID-19 earmarked reserve. Only by adopting this approach are we able to protect frontline services until we more fully understand the implications of COVID-19 on the council and over the medium and long term. Our prudent approach will still leave significant funds in the COVID-19 earmarked reserve to help us manage the financial challenges. It is testament to the commitment of both councillors and officers alike that we are here today to determine the council's budget, and I would like to record my personal thanks to everyone involved. The budget I present today reflects the priorities of the Scottish Conservative and Unionist councillors across Perth and Conroth. This is our fourth administration budget and builds on the following themes: education and families, economic development, communities, environment and infrastructure, and corporate initiatives. Provost, I am confident these themes will continue to find support across the whole chamber and in our communities. Provost, I am confident these themes will continue to find support across the whole chamber and in their communities. Before I speak to these themes, I would like to remind everyone the context in which we have prepared this budget. Two years ago, the Accounts Commission auditors commended this council's approach to financial planning and compliments further commentary from external auditors regarding our strong financial management and effective governance. I am always encouraged by the consensus across the chamber on the importance of careful stewardship on the council's finances. However, there is no doubt that over the past decade, this has been made more difficult by the Scottish government's continual reduction in funding of local government in real terms. Provost, everyone in the meeting will agree that investment in education, health and social care is welcome. But equally, we must acknowledge that there are other services which are residents' and visitors' value and have the right to expect equally high standards. Provost, I now come to families and education. Last October, our budget consultation and engagement survey outcomes highlighted that other than responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, education in schools and our children's future have consistently been identified as the most important priority for our residents. I am therefore pleased to report that education in families are once more key features in this budget. Throughout lockdown, our pupils, parents and teachers have worked tirelessly to deliver the best possible education in these unprecedented times. However, as we all know, home learning is no substitute for being at school. And a number of our children have found themselves educationally disadvantaged by their circumstances. We therefore propose to invest £200,000 over the next two years to provide targeted resources aimed at getting all children disadvantaged by long periods of learning at home back on track with their studies. Following the success of the Perth City campus, we propose to invest further in the rollout of our virtual campus as part of our digital learning strategy and put in additional resources to increase access to national courses and foundation apprenticeships. Annually, a further £136,000 will be invested in our virtual campus. And we are working with our neighbouring authorities in Angus and Dundee City to provide Tayside-wide virtual campus. An additional amount of £272,000 over two years will increase opportunities for our pupils to gain national qualifications and foundation apprenticeships. Together, these two measures will allow our pupils to access the much wider variety of academic and vocational courses and qualifications than ever before. The recent Independent Care Review made a commitment to all care-experienced infants, children and young people, adults and their families, that every child should grow up loved, safe and respected, and able to realise their full potential. It was entitled 'The Promise', we therefore promised to commit £180,000 over the next two years towards the implementation of the principles in The Promise, through the development and implementation of a new family support model. Provost, this council has a proud record of our commitment to looked-after and care-experienced youngsters. We are 100% committed to ensuring the words in The Promise become a reality. I would therefore like to take this opportunity to thank all those partners who serve as corporate parents and who take responsibilities of their roles in this area so seriously. Over the past few years, this council has extended provision for education of children with additional support needs. Consequently, the transport budget for ASN pupils has risen significantly over the period and now stands at almost 2.3 million. A review of ASN transport forms part of our inclusive practice review improvement plan. And officers from Education and Children's Services, together with colleagues from Public Transport Unit, were looking to identify potential solutions to reduce the significant transport cost. Therefore, I propose a Spain-to-Safe project today to commit an additional resource to the project, to speed up this review in order that this significant future, sorry, in order that significant future savings can be made. In recent years, 57 children and young people from disadvantaged backgrounds have benefited from our investment in instrumental music service. Finally, under this theme, we have committed a further sum of £35,000, sum of which will be utilised through the Perth and Kinross Music Foundation towards helping more children from deprived backgrounds to become to the benefit of music tuition and to assist all our children who learn an instrument to access our orchestras and central groups. Our next theme is economic development, Provost. And in addition to the previous measures in our budget last year, this administration will commit substantial assistance to aid economic recovery in this year's budget. Our first initiative is a skills passport. We will commit £125,000 for each of the next two years to provide funding grants of up to £2,000. This will assist people who attend training courses or to purchase equipment to help them with their skills to enter the workplace. Furthermore, Provost, in partnership with the Perth Chamber of Commerce and Grow Biz, we will introduce a new business crowdfunding scheme, providing £175,000 to permit match funding to support local businesses and to commit a further £200,000 to provide micro grants for small businesses to assist with start-up or expansion costs. Following the success of last year's funding assistance, we are providing £350,000, or up to 50% grants to a maximum of £50,000 to help convert underused or vacant commercial space in our high streets for new uses. Our Open for Business Fund commits £200,000 to encourage rural town centre businesses to update street frontages and to give grant assistance to support empty property initiatives. Our Perth and Kinross marketing strategy will commit £250,000 to promote Perth and Kinross as a visitor destination and promote local goods and services. In addition, it will allow the creation of a visitor management fund to assist our rural communities cope with the increased visitor footfall during the summer months. Provost, car parking charges will no longer be implemented this year in the way that we had, and this way, we hope to encourage increased footfall from our local retailers. We move to communities, Provost. I would now like to turn to our key priorities and our support for communities. One of this administration's proudest achievements has been the establishment of the Community Investment Fund, providing direct grants to community groups across Perth and Kinross to invest in the projects that are of importance to them. And in this coming year, we will be, we will make £600,000 available through this fund. On top of this, we propose to invest a further £160,000 for five key initiatives. First, we will invest £20,000 in food security. This builds on the strengths of our holiday hunger programme in schools and on the wealth of community-led initiatives that have come to the fore particularly over the past year. This funding will allow these projects to extend from organising food distribution projects and redistributing supermarket surpluses to activities such as teaching people to cook nutritious meals from inexpensive ingredients in their own homes. Secondly, to promote digital inclusion, where we will invest £20,000. Over the course of the last year, volunteer-led projects have made a real difference by helping often elderly and vulnerable residents to access services and remain connected during periods of lockdown, for example, by loaning out computer devices. In an increasingly digital age, this funding will allow community groups to continue this excellent work, for example, by training volunteers to support those who have so far missed out on the digital revolution or helping elderly residents to use video calling to stay in touch with their families. Thirdly, we are impressed with the work of the Care and Wellbeing Cooperative that operates in rural parts of the authority. And so I propose to invest £50,000 to expand this model into other areas of Perth and Kinross. This will help us to reduce inequality in terms of access to care and wellbeing services, help residents who need social care to have regular, greater degree of personal choice and increase the employability of existing workers. Fourthly, our No Wrong Door style training initiative will equip staff across the council and in our alleys to identify vulnerable residents or residents in need of assistance and be able to direct them straight away to the correct agency which can provide them with the help that they require. Finally, under our communities theme, we will provide an additional £50,000 of support for environmental projects led by community groups. This additional funding will help groups such as In Bloom Committees, Friends of Cemeteries organisations and litter picking groups. And this will build on the highly successful and visible initiatives that are already benefiting communities and the environment across Perth and Kinross. Our next theme is environment and infrastructure. Bear with me. This administration wants to ensure that our local infrastructure is up to the standards that our local residents have a right to expect and create a better local environment for us all. The pandemic has severely affected our programme for maintaining roads. Many of our staff, who would have been fixing potholes or resurfacing roads, were retasked to help with the coronavirus response and/or were unable to carry out their regular duties due to the Scottish government restrictions and lockdown. In addition, the condition of our roads has not been helped by the recent spell of extreme weather. The Conservatives in Perth and Kinross council want to put this right. On top of our annual roads maintenance budget of £10 million, I can today announce a further investment of £4 million, taking the total budget for the coming year to a total of £14 million. It will help our roads maintenance team catch up on the works delayed due to coronavirus restrictions last year, which I'm sure this initiative will be welcomed by residents across Perth and Kinross. To put this in context, Provost, this is the single biggest investment in improving our roads in a single year by any Perth and Kinross administration of any political type. This is a top priority for local residents and it is also a top priority for the Conservative administration. This pandemic has been a difficult time for many families who have lost loved ones. The restrictions on funerals have made this even harder by preventing family and friends from attending services in person. It is therefore not appropriate to introduce charges for the use of webcams at our crematorium and this year, and even after the coronavirus restrictions are lifted. We will be rejecting this proposal in full. Furthermore, we also feel it is appropriate to reject increases in the cost of memorial benches so that families do not pay extra to commemorate their loved ones during this difficult time. The pandemic has seen a rise in cases of domestic abuse. For those who feel unsafe in their home, stay-at-home orders mean that they have been in closer proximity to an abusive person in their household for longer periods. Both governments have mounted campaigns to encourage people in this situation to seek support, and we can do more locally too. Consequently, I am pledging an additional funding to women's aid to help support vulnerable women who find themselves in these extremely difficult circumstances. Many of our businesses have had to adopt how they deliver their services to ensure that they are COVID-compliant by installing perspex screens, implementing social distancing and making hand sanitizers readily available. This is to put significant pressure on our regulatory services team who have been supporting them. So as well as pushing back a previously approved saving, we plan to put in additional investment into this team to help support our local businesses. The winter weather continues to present us with challenges. Perth and Kinross has a vast network of roads and footways to grit, and many local residents have been keen to do their bit to help grit the roads and pavements. We are therefore investing funds in our successfully community hand gritters project and will also provide additional grit bins where needed. The cold weather, combined with local flooding, has severely damaged the condition of Lockleven Heritage Trail. This is a significant tourist attraction and it has been well-used during the pandemic as a popular place for outdoor exercise. It is therefore important that this is maintained and accessible to the local residents and tourists alike. As a result, we are investing money to improve the path surface, address drainage issues and widen the path. We hope that this significant investment of £160,000 will enable locals to lever in on external funding from other local charities. Together, these measures provide a significant conservative investment in local infrastructure and environment improvements despite the financial challenges we face. We move on to health and wellbeing. Provost, the mental health of our workforce is a priority and we commit £25,000 to support initiatives to improve the mental health and wellbeing of our staff. Over the past year, they have collectively stepped up and worked unstintingly to support the large number of individuals and communities throughout Perth and Kinross. Before moving on, Provost, I want to re-emphasise our commitment to the PH2O project. We are committed on £290,000 to bring forward a business case for this project to our next capital budget. I would also, Provost, like to pay tribute to the staff of our council. Everyone has been challenged by COVID-19 this year, and I thank our staff who have worked tirelessly to support our citizens and communities in the most difficult of circumstances. They deserve our gratitude. Before I conclude, Provost, it would be remiss of me not to mention our two colleagues who passed away during the past year and to remember them with sadness, councillors Bob Band and Henry Anderson. Finally, Provost, this budget invests in our children, it invests in our economic recovery, it invests in our communities and our infrastructure. And on behalf of my Conservative colleagues, I commend this budget to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Provost. Provost, I am delighted to formally second the Scottish Conservative Group budget motion. Four years ago, when this administration was elected, we outlined our aspiration to devolve powers to our communities and to ensure that they had a voice in the services delivered in their local area. Since then, through the development of the Perth and Kinross offer, we have continued on that path. And our budget today sets out the next steps in how we will work with our communities, not just to recover from the challenges of COVID-19, but to build on the strengths and resilience we have witnessed in our towns, villages and the city over the past year. Our budget sets out clear priorities for rebuilding our economy, revitalising our high street, I welcome that especially for Dr Arder, for helping our children and young people in education recovery, supporting families to be resilient and for our communities to be vibrant and welcoming places for all. The Perth and Kinross offer is not just words or a policy document, but a means in which our communities can become better places in which to live and work. I look forward to working with colleagues, officers and communities as we take the priorities laid out in our budget forward. And I take this opportunity to formally second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Ling, you have an amendment. Can I now ask you to speak to the amendment and to have this circulated?
Thank you very much, Provost. I assume that it's being circulated as we speak. So, thank you, Provost. And I'd like to thank councillor Lyle for mentioning the two colleagues that we have lost. And indeed, they are a big miss to us as an SNP group, but also to the whole family of elected members across Perth and Kinross. So thank you, Murray, for remembering councillor Band and councillor Anderson. It's appreciated. So today, Provost, it gives me great pleasure to present the SNP Group's revenue budget for 2021/22. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all officers involved in this difficult and somewhat truncated budget setting process. It will be the first ever to have been prepared and then taking place in virtual meeting rooms. All officers and elected members have learnt new skills and have adapted to the new way we are having to conduct business at this time. I'd like to especially thank Scott Walker and Caroline France, along with members of the SNP Budget Review Group and other SNP elected members for the time, energy and advice they have provided. they have provided to help bring forward this amendment. Our budget has as its driving force the people, communities and community organisations across all of Perth and Kinross. Our budget is of the moment. Being a one-year budget is focused on what we can do right now to help all our residents come out of this pandemic situation, which for many has and could lead to further financial hardship. Therefore, this SNP budget is aimed at giving residents some financial some financial breathing space and assisting those in difficulty to find a route through the current situation. The next financial year starts in three weeks' time. Therefore, much of our budget is designed to create extra capacity within organisations and council teams that already exist and are already providing vital support to many people. Now is not the time to ask officers to create new schemes or for dramatic change in service provision. These things can be addressed as we move through the year, increasing and augmenting current capacity where required as the thrust of this SNP amendment. The SNP Group are presenting a sensible, measured budget which seeks to build on community capacity that has been forged in the teeth of the Covid nineteen emergency. We intend to back up and reinforce the fantastic work done by community groups who have risen to the challenge of providing help to others within their communities. We are pleased that the council has already accepted the generous SNP Scottish Government offer of a payment equivalent to that of a three percent council tax rise. This payment was predicated on the council freezing the council tax charge for our PKC residents for one year. This means that council tax payers in Perth and Kinross will see no increase in the council tax element of this year's charges. Understanding the pressures on household budgets with many struggling to obtain such a basic item as food, we have committed one hundred thousand pounds to support community fridges, food larders and provide additional resources for food banks where required. We will also reduce the price of school meals for primary school children to one pound ninety five and for secondary pupils to two pound ten to encourage uptake of this important meal. We will increase this year's school clothing grant by a hundred and fifty thousand pounds to help with school clothing, including PE kit for more disadvantaged children in our society. We have already heard today from Sheena Devlin that we are already overspending on this vital asset. As we've come out of pandemic measures and schools continue to reopen to more pupils, we have committed two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to increase capacity for schools regarding this return to schooling and help peoples resettle back into school life. A cohort of primary school children have missed out on their block of swimming lessons in the last year because of Covid measures. We have added eighty thousand pounds to help fund opportunities which will enable these children to receive lessons in this important life skill. With pressures on the public transport budget, new initiatives have to be found, and that's why we are allocating sixty thousand pounds to a strategic review of public transport. We do not think that increasing car parking charges again will help increase footfall which our businesses will rely on as they emerge from the pandemic, and therefore we are not willing to increase the car parking charge at this stage. Many facets of the current situation mean that our welfare rights team are heavily overworked and the pressure on them will only increase, certainly in the short term. That's why we have allocated eighty thousand pounds recurring funding to this team to increase capacity. Regarding financial inclusion, we have allocated three hundred thousand to provide assistance to help tenants in the private landlord sector rental in the same way that the HRA provides help for council tenants facing the same issues. I draw your attention to point five on page one where the SNP amendment wishes that monies allocated there are spent on EBI initiatives and the Tenancy Sustainment Fund. Social prescribing will receive an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand pounds, and I have more knowledgeable SNP members who will describe in detail the benefits of this programme later. We feel that the community-led groups have been extremely important in the fight against Covid nineteen. They know their areas best and working with partners know who the most vulnerable in their communities are. We wish to build on that community-based work and are allocating an extra six hundred thousand pounds to local action partnerships to be specifically targeted at Covid nineteen-related groups and those that will help lead us out of the pandemic situation. PH two O is a running sore within the council. We've been promised almost every recent budget or information session that a way forward is just around the corner. This leisure facility project is at a critical stage and a business model has to be found before it gets to a point of no return. Therefore, we have allocated an extra eighty thousand to provide extra capacity to accelerate this process. We've allocated an extra fifty thousand to both women's aid and RASAC to help with increased casework, which has been related to the stresses put on family groups, again related to Covid nineteen issues. The SNP Group was shocked to read the officers' proposed charges document of the proposal to charge for webcam services at the crematorium at this time. I believe this was an error in the way the proposal was written. I also believe that every elected member, whatever political hue, would have rejected this. This would have been totally inexcusable and inappropriate and would never have come to pass in any budget of any political grouping. The SNP Group also refused to accept the rise in the cost for memorial benches because the rise is very substantial and more people may wish to purchase such a tribute to their loved one because they have not been able to make a mark of bereavement in the normal circumstance, in a normal way because of Covid restrictions. Traffic volumes will undoubtedly increase as restrictions are lifted. We, the SNP Group, propose that a hundred thousand pounds is allocated to encourage the use of electric cars and various car sharing and carpool schemes. Many beautiful areas of Perthshire were visited last summer. Unfortunately, not all visitors left the area as they found it. PKC, the police and other partner organisations made a difference, and this increased as the severity of the problem was recognised. The SNP Group wished to allocate fifty thousand pounds to maintain the capacity the council has and the coordination of all agencies involved in this growing problem. Fly tipping is a scourge that officers are doing their best to clear up. We as an SNP Group think that we must attack this problem at source. We should identify and pursue offenders at every opportunity using any technology available. We need to have a credible deterrent, and we have allocated seventy six thousand pounds to create capacity to achieve this. I have always believed that bottles are a part of life now and would never claim to have the ultimate solution, but through a variety of circumstances that are very prevalent and deep at this time, whilst feeling a policy regarding this needs discussed and refreshed, we are allocating one million pounds to deal with the current issues and nine hundred thousand pounds towards dealing with issues involving bridges and structures which are which have become prevalent across Perth and Kinross council. This brings me on to my old budget perennial, and it's the A nine link road, the Stewart Tower Road between Morthley and Bankfoot. Recently, our Development Management Committee voted to allow housing to be built in Stanley, which is the route that the traffic from Blair Gowry travels through, and this will involve the road being closed by one carriageway. We therefore need to have a suitable link road to take people from Blair Gowry onto the A nine without going through the villages of Stanley and Lundkerty, and we are allocating a hundred and fifty thousand pounds to improve the road surface in that important link road. Finally, I think all elected members received an email from a resident regarding recognising in some way the sacrifice people have made through this pandemic. People have passed away without loved ones, being able to see them, be with them and not to be able to mourn them in the way they would have wished. Others have stayed in to protect themselves and others to protect themselves and others. Many have helped, many have made personal sacrifice, the list is endless, extending to our youth who have missed out on many personal landmarks. I cannot mention everyone who has contributed to the effort, but think it is fitting that we commission a piece of art where anyone can visit to reflect on the sacrifice all residents of Perth and Kinross have given for the greater good. The SNP Group proposes in our budget forty thousand pounds for this purpose. The only saving we reject is the proposed cut in the budget for adult learning services delivered by SLEs. We feel this is not appropriate at this time and are reinstating this on a recurring basis. I'm pleased that the SNP Group agreed this budget had to be all about the here and now. This is not a normal situation and normally we'd be setting a three-year budget. Our plans are all shovel-ready, ready to go and deliverable within a short timeframe. The general situation and budget situation will change throughout the year and we will be part of the monitoring process and able to adapt to any changes at the appropriate juncture. People need help now, and coupled with announcements made at the recent Holyrood budget discussions, we can augment and help national strategy while choosing to do the best for our residents now. Thanks for listening, and if you're unable to vote for our proposals, I urge you to consider them, adapt them if you wish, or incorporate them into your budget. I ask you do not dismiss them because of narrow party politics. Our people deserve better than that. I commend this SNP budget amendment to the council. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you, councillor Ling. Can I now ask councillor McCall to second the amendment?
Thank you, Provost. I too extend thanks to officers for their input to this budget process, always with good humour, patience and with candour. Councillors, over the past twelve months, community groups throughout our council area have pulled together in ways we could not have imagined possible, ensuring that the most vulnerable among us were supported and not isolated, that those shielding received food and medicines. We in the SNP Group extend our thanks and gratitude to our local area partnerships and to all community groups, organisations and volunteers who mobilised in response to local needs as they arose. Our thanks are also extended to all the staff of Perth and Kinross council who had a pivotal role in our Covid response and more recently supporting the rollout of the vaccination programme. In the year ahead, as we hopefully emerge from this pandemic, we recognise that there will be different but no less complex challenges facing our communities. So with this in mind, our budget is investing a total of seven hundred thousand in our local communities across all of Perth and Kinross. Six hundred thousand pounds of this will be invested in local area partnerships who we believe are best placed to work with local groups to identify and support locality needs and specifically to help local communities emerge from Covid lockdown. And a further one hundred thousand pounds will be invested to continue initiatives that tackle food poverty such as eat well and live well and to provide additional support for food banks. Perhaps our school communities, more than most, face the most changes to the way that they work and engage with each other, and they have responded amazingly well to the challenges that we're faced with. And we in the SNP Group do not believe that this is the time to impose additional costs or reduce services. So we are investing a total of six hundred and forty four thousand in our young people and their families. One hundred and sixty four thousand pounds of this will reduce the price of school meals. An additional one hundred and fifty thousand pounds will go towards school clothing grants. Two hundred and fifty thousand pounds will provide targeted additional support for young people returning to school and eighty thousand pounds to ensure all children have access to swimming lessons, including those who may have missed out over the past year. And in addition, we will maintain funding for adult learning. We also recognise that many individuals and families may face challenging financial circumstances over the next year. So we are investing a total of three hundred and eighty thousand pounds to support those who may need a helping hand to emerge from this pandemic. Eighty thousand pounds to increase capacity in our welfare rights team and three hundred thousand pounds to fund a financial inclusion initiative for private tenants similar to the Tenancy Sustainment Fund available to council tenants. We recognise that as elected members, we have a duty to support people live independent, healthy and active lives. So we are investing a total of three hundred and sixty thousand pounds to help do just that. One hundred thousand pounds will be allocated to organisations to support victims of domestic and sexual abuse, which we all know has increased during this pandemic and the various lockdown periods. Ten thousand pounds will be provided as start-up funding to support the Ochradra and District Community Sports Hub get up and running. Two hundred and fifty thousand pounds increased investment in social prescribing. This will expand access to therapeutic services delivered by Live Active Leisure. These services have a proven track record of improving the lives and wellbeing of people with mental health issues and those with underlying health conditions such as diabetes and arthritis. Of course, Provost, we could have had a much more we could have had much more capacity available to deliver health and wellbeing services via Live Active Leisure for everyone in Perth and Kinross. The leisure pool in Durr Centre situated in my ward of Perth City South are well-loved and well-used by local residents and the wider Perth and Kinross communities, but they are aging facilities and require replacement urgently. The SNP and administration have the vision to recognise a reimagining of the entire complex, and the PH two O project was initiated with funding allocated. But regrettably, the PH two O project has not been progressed over the past few years and currently it's not included in capital spending priorities. And despite comments from councillor Lyle earlier, there is no there remains a lack of clarity as to when a fully developed business plan and supporting budget will be brought forward. Therefore, we're investing an additional eighty thousand pounds to accelerate the development of an updated and viable business plan that is so badly needed now for the PH two O project. Provost, our budget proposals prioritise practical and wellbeing support for our communities, schools and families and for individuals that can be delivered immediately from the start of the new financial year. Provost, I am pleased to second our SNP revenue budget amendment for twenty twenty one, twenty two, and I wholeheartedly recommend it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCall. Councillor Barrett, Peter Barrett, you have an amendment. Can I now ask you to speak to the amendment and for this to be circulated?
Thank you very much, Provost. I would also wish to associate the Liberal Democrat Group with the statements made by the leader of the council and the leader of the SNP Group recognising the contributions of councillors Band and Anderson to Perth and Kinross council. I wish to put that on record, Provost. Provost, they say that a week is a long time in politics and around budget time. That could not be truer. Last week, we faced the severe financial impacts and consequences of the Scottish Government refusing to baseline the council tax fees incentive into the local government settlement. This week, thanks to the intervention of the Liberal Democrats in Holyrood, that cliff-edge drop in funding next year and in subsequent years has been averted. Strong resistance and constructive engagement and dialogue between opposition parties and the government has secured the ninety million pounds that will be based lined into the settlement and that the seventeen million pound black hole that would have occurred in our budget has been averted. In the midst of a pandemic, people expect and demand that their representatives work together, and our budget proposals and constructive engagement has characterised our approach to putting forward our amendment. And I'm grateful to the council leader for the opportunities that we've had to set out some of our priorities for the year ahead, which have clearly influenced the direction of the budget motion in front of us. Recognising our distinct and separate political priorities and starting points, there is commonality, but equally clearly, there is still room for improvement and a greater social inclusion impact to be made. Our budget amendment is about putting recovery first, putting the needs of the people and communities of Perth and Kinross first. It's about setting Perth and Kinross on the route to recovery while still recognising the constraints the council is under as we strive to overcome the pandemic, support the vaccination rollout and rebuild our local economy. Our budget is about no one being left behind digitally, socially or financially by supporting people to build stronger, more cohesive, self-reliant, kinder and self-supporting communities. That's what many of the key themes and issues have fed back to the council during the course of the past year and during the budget consultation. We welcome and fully support the additional staff capacity and welfare rights and the administration of the Scottish Welfare Fund of a hundred and fifty five thousand, which is on page seventy seven of appendix D. But let's not forget that at present, the Scottish Government is underfunding Perth and Kinross council to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand pounds a year on administration of the Scottish Welfare Fund. And Provost, that's a disgraceful state of affairs that should have been put right in the Scottish Government budget and must be put right in an urgent review of Scottish welfare funding. Across Scotland, councils are spending seven point six million in getting the right welfare supports to people in need and in crisis, but we're only being reimbursed for five point three million. We cannot be left out in the cold and two and a half million pounds out of pocket any longer. Provost, we know that there are people suffering in our communities, suffering from isolation, loss of work and income, loss of confidence, people who have not been able to come together to grieve losses of loved ones, people whose mental health has been severely affected. We also know that inequalities concentrate that harm further still. People are not equally affected by their sex, their ethnicity, their age, their sexual orientation and whether or not they have a disability. These different characteristics shape our lives and can act in combination to create multiple layers of disadvantage. So in our budget, we've targeted young people whose health and wellbeing has been impacted negatively by lockdown. We want to put in place more youth workers to support those We want to put in place more youth workers to support those young people, particularly young people involved in substance misuse, to make their recovery our priority and support them on the route to better outcomes and futures. And councillor Liz Barrett will say more about that. Provost, I don't want to suggest that the Liberal Democrats have the monopoly on good ideas. Sometimes we put up the signposts in the right direction, and in the past, parties have followed those the year after. Other times, you see a really good idea coming through which needs to be seized upon and expanded with some big money put behind it. And that is absolutely the case with our proposal to help people to lead independent lives through digital, social and financial inclusion. We want to expand the groundbreaking work our housing services initiating and how it works with our tenants so that they can better access services and supports and know how to cope with Covid and life post-Covid. It is also entirely consistent with our approach to tackling inequalities for young people that I outlined earlier. And by this means our council will engage with and respond to vulnerable people in the wider population beyond our own tenants, people who could fall into the poverty trap, the elderly, universal credit claimants, people threatened by eviction or who are in debt or have poor mental health. We are putting a further £250,000 over and above the £150,000 in the housing revenue account towards making Perth and Kinross a more equal and inclusive place, because it's what people have clearly told us they need and want, and it's the right thing to do. Provost, on top of that, I welcome the additional £120 million my Liberal Democrat parliamentary colleagues secured to deliver community mental health supports and early access to therapies. Provost, we've heard about the increasing toll on our frontline and customer-facing staff, the increase in calls and concerns, the increasing stresses on staff and those in our communities are experiencing, and how that translates into the volume and nature of the calls for help that the council receives. We also know how well our communities have responded to the crisis, how they have rallied to prevent hunger, loneliness and social isolation. But there is still a rich seam of community and volunteer effort which can be harnessed to the benefit of our community. People prepared to pay something forward who could head off crisis calls to the council by developing social networks, befriending and wellbeing checks. And again, this is reflected in what our residents are telling the council. Provost, I know from personal experience, having conducted hundreds of wellbeing check phone calls, just the sort of lift that people get from knowing that somebody out there is thinking about them. And we will put £70,000 towards appointing community coordinators who will help communities build and expand existing support networks, and we will complement that with £80,000 to train and develop the skills of key community volunteers to support those networks. Provost, that approach is entirely consistent with the development and approach of the Perth and Kinross offer. My colleagues will speak more about the investment we want to make in our roads and our footways, our ongoing commitment to meeting our community's demand for safer streets for active travel and 20 mile an hour speed limits. Councillor Robertson instigated the need to make a major contribution to the Loch Leven Heritage Trail with investment in outdoor access, exercise and visitor infrastructure, and to attract more people to the Loch Leven area and attract more funding to the Loch Leven project with additional ability to leave an external funding. Provost, our amendment puts recovery first, puts the vulnerable first, and puts the Covid reserve to good use, and I commend it to you.
Thank you, councillor Barrett. Can I call on councillor Liz Barrett to second the amendment?
Thank you, Provost. I'd like to start by passing on my thanks also to all the council officers for all your work and support to elected members on our finances and the iterations in preparation of the budgets. Councillors, we know that the next year is going to be hard as we hope we're emerging from the pandemic. We know that we have to apply our limited resources to putting recovery first, and we know that it's right that we focus on our economy and on our young people and on all those who've been worst impacted by the pandemic. I'm happy to second this amendment to utilise some of our Covid reserves to support... I too welcome the additional £120 million for mental health services in Scotland, which has been added to the Scottish Government's budget for communities thanks to pressure from the Liberal Democrats. We know that our young people have been seriously impacted by the lockdowns and restrictions, not least the effects on their mental health, and we're proposing a one-off investment of £90,000 in their health and wellbeing. We don't know just now how many people will need help, but this funding will put in place youth workers who can support them, and particularly to help them to tackle the addiction and misuse of drugs and alcohol. We support investment to help tackle the empty buildings in our city and town centres, and we're proposing that £250,000 should be spent in the coming year to support changing use where needed so that we can provide useful accommodation for businesses and people and bring sustainable life back to our high streets when we're allowed out again. The pandemic has shown great inequality between the digital haves and the have-nots. And I know of many in my own ward who are relying on our library for digital access, and many older people who are completely unable to access things that a lot of us take for granted. That's why we're proposing to invest £250,000 in providing support to enable people who've been missing out to have access to financial services and support, knowing about available benefits and opportunities, social involvement, having their say in surveys and consultations, and providing modern skills so that we can improve digital, social and financial inclusion across Perth and Kinross. As Peter said, this will build on the work being done with council tenants and extend it to more people suffering from exclusion and inequality. Over the last few months, many callers to the council's calls and repair centres have turned out to be lonely, sometimes desperate, and others just in need of a chat or a little bit of local help. At the same time, we also learned over the last year how many caring individuals across Perth and Kinross are ready and willing to commit their time and their talents to help in their community, whether by shopping for the elderly, providing a listening ear, picking up medicines, going out with a litter picker, or helping our food shares and food banks. I know myself what a difference a coordinator is going to make to the great work done by volunteer food shares across Perth and Kinross. That's why we're proposing that we should make a one-off investment of £70,000 in our volunteer befriending and wellbeing checks to develop volunteer recruitment and to provide more support to local groups so they can free up time in council call and repair centres. We also want to invest £80,000 to give support and training to enable local volunteers to tackle local issues and organise more resources, events and spaces for their community. We know that the climate emergency is bringing more severe winter weather and that the successive storms stretched our maintenance teams beyond the limits in the last few months, and I salute the work that they undertook in that time. The storms also had a serious impact on the state of our roads, which is particularly off-putting for cyclists. But the damage to pavements and paths also affects pedestrians and those with wheelchairs or buggies. We're proposing an increase to the budget of £250,000 to be invested in our roads and footways to tackle this. We know that many communities were more than willing to help with gritting when given the tools and the supplies, as councillor Lyle said, and councillor Simpson has demonstrated to us how easy it is. That's why we want to provide an additional £50,000 towards mini gritting machines and grit bins and supplies. We wholeheartedly support the investment of £160,000 now for repair of the Loch Leven Heritage Trail to avoid much greater cost later or the threat of the loss of this fantastic resource for local walkers and cyclists, which also attracts tourists from further afield. We take the climate emergency very seriously, and our amendment to increase investment in road safety measures, especially around our schools, will also help the environment by reducing car speeds and improving air quality. We propose that we should invest a further £200,000 to support extension of our 20 mile an hour zones, increase the number of vehicle-activated signs, and to be able to tackle more areas in need of yellow lines and school exclusion zones, again, something which residents have been asking for. Many of these projects are ready to start, having been postponed due to reallocation of resources during the current financial year. Councillors, our amendment from the Liberal Democrats is focused on supporting a green recovery here in Perth and Kinross to tackle our empty high streets, to support our young people, to improve our roads and make them safer whilst also tackling the climate emergency, to reduce inequality by providing opportunities to individuals and groups who are digitally, financially and socially excluded, and to involve the people of Perth and Kinross who care and who want to help. Please support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrett. Thank you. Can we now move on to councillor MacDade, as you have an amendment? And can I ask you also to speak to the amendment and for this to be circulated?
Thank you, Provost. I would like to record the passing of councillors Band and Anderson as well. They were two of the most friendly and hard-working councillors, and they will be sorely missed by us all, particularly around budget time. And I recall them giving me various bits of advice during recesses through the years, and I do miss them deeply. Before I start, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Scott Walker and Alison O'Brien for their significant support and patience over the past days and weeks. I would also like to thank Stuart Mackenzie, Karen Dawson, Lisa Simpson and all the other officers, particularly those in the finance teams across the council who provided information and advice to aid the completion of our amendment. We have yet again been faced by an extremely challenging budget cycle. The challenges of a global pandemic on top of over a decade of cuts to local government have made this year particularly difficult. The council tax fees funded by the Scottish Government is welcome as council taxes are aggressive tax that hits poorest families and pensioners the most. And these are some of the groups who have also been the worst affected by Covid and who we have sought to support in our amendment. We urgently need the Scottish Parliament to look at reform of local government funding as the current situation is unsustainable. However, our revenue budget amendment seeks to set out a positive direction for this council and for the people of Perth and Kinross. It protects the frontline services that people care most about whilst at the same time looking to invest in new areas that we believe are critical to our recovery post-Covid. It has sustainability and our communities at the heart and looks to protect the most vulnerable. We must build back a better Perth and Kinross fit for the future. The immediate focus of our recovery will rightly be on ensuring our economy rebounds, and our amendment seeks to support this in a number of ways, and I shall now outline some of those measures. We are all aware that small businesses have, in particular, struggled with cash flow over the past year. And after the longest winter, they have little, if any, money left to help grow and improve their business. This is why we are allocating £100,000 to run another round of the council's very successful micro grant scheme. This scheme allows small enterprises and startups to apply for funding to support new capital purchases. Tourism businesses make up a big part of the Perth and Kinross economy. Therefore, I'm delighted to be able to announce £1 million to support tourism infrastructure in our rural areas. Following the easing of restrictions last year, our communities experienced unprecedented levels of visitors from across Scotland and the UK. While there is welcome support for our economy, it created significant pressures on our local infrastructure. In many cases, the existing infrastructure was not big enough, or in some cases, it was non-existent. This led to understandable tensions between residents and visitors. This fund will allow the council to either work directly or through partners, build the necessary infrastructure, such as car parking and wastewater facilities for camper vans at beauty spots to alleviate problems faced last year. This will also help create a much better visitor experience for those coming here to Perth and Kinross. We are also separately providing £1 million for active travel routes and paths in rural areas. This will allow expansion of our path network and the creation of new routes where there is demand. We have also committed £250,000 towards capital improvement works of the Loch Leven Heritage Trail because it is essential that we maintain existing infrastructure used by both residents and visitors. In addition, we have provided £30,000 on a recurring basis for our local Bloom and Path groups, who help keep our communities welcoming for everyone. New border signage for our historic boroughs will help create a greater sense of place for our visitors as well. However, infrastructure alone is not enough and to tackle the visitor pressures, which is why today our group is proposing to spend £240,000 to support the creation of a new permanent ranger service. This new ranger service would work with partner agencies and support our communities by providing advice to visitors on accessing the countryside responsibly. We know that engagement is critical to reduce the effects of littering, fires and antisocial behaviour that can be caused by responsible access. And given the expectation of another staycation boom this summer, it is vital that this investment is made now. These measures will create a nicer environment for residents and tourists and allow Perth and Kinross to continue to be promoted as a positive place to visit by our tourism businesses. Recovery is not only about the economy, though. Our citizens have suffered significantly over the past year through this pandemic. We know that many of those in our communities have experienced issues with mental health, particularly those living alone. This is why we have allocated £70,000 on a recurring basis for mental health initiatives. This will help fund ongoing support across Perth and Kinross because we know these issues can't be fixed by short-term measures. Covid has also laid bare a lot of inequalities. That exists in our society, and we must take action to address these. This is why we have allocated £40,000 on a recurring basis to provide ongoing flexible support through inequalities fund. The past year has also demonstrated inequalities in access to certain leisure facilities. Sometimes these were some of the only ones that were allowed during certain periods of Covid restrictions. Therefore, we have provided £75,000 to support youth community access to golf and tennis facilities. This flexible fund will be available to schools and local clubs to encourage uptake of these sports in their communities by removing some of the financial barriers that can exist. Sport will be vital to help us rebuild our fitness levels post-Covid. This is why we are proposing to place £200,000 on a recurring basis into an earmarked reserve to facilitate £5 million of borrowing for a future PH2O project. Perth deserves a public leisure facility fit for the 21st century, and this is a firm commitment to that project. Just as Perth deserves a leisure facility that's fit for the 21st century, that Lockeray deserves a new school that is fit for the 21st century. Temporary prefab buildings that were not due to last more than 20 years are now expected to last beyond 50. This council removed its commitment to replace these ageing buildings in June 2018, and in our view, it is essential that commitment is reinstated. Therefore, we are making a commitment of £18 million for a new all-through community campus by making provision of £576,000 on a recurring basis to go into earmarked reserves, which can be drawn down as part of the future capital budgets. Our budget also brings an end to the divisive school estate review and will allow some of our parents and pupils to focus on recovery instead of worrying about their school's future. We know our communities are concerned about the condition of our roads network and that it is in need of significant investment. Therefore, we have committed £3.5 million to allow the council to catch up on the backlog of repairs caused by Covid and last year's bad winter. We have also allocated £40,000 on a recurring basis to allow the council to continue its policy of match funding works for unadopted roads to bring them up to an adoptable standard. We are committed to continuing to support increased devolution of power to our communities. This is why we have allocated £40,000 annually for the administration costs of a Kinrossshire pilot area committee. If the pilot is a success, we would hope to see this rolled out across all of our communities. Our budget invests significantly in public and community transport as part of our efforts to reduce our environmental impact. We have again allocated funding for a people's bus feasibility study to consider publicly-owned models that might help the expansion of rural bus services in the future. We are also making provision for feasibility studies into the reopening of the railway to Kinross, which is already a policy of this council, and another into a Persia-like railway system to link up our rural communities with the city of Perth. This amendment is a budget for all of Perth and Kinross. It invests in our businesses and our tourism economy, in the health and tackling inequalities, in education and young people, in public transport initiatives and protecting the environment. We must build back better, and this budget does that. It is a budget for the future and for our communities. I commend the independent and Scottish Labour Budget Amendment to the council.
Thank you, councillor MacDade. Can I now ask councillor Brock to second the amendment?
Thank you, Provost. I'm proud to second this progressive budget, which is focused on supporting our businesses and communities to recover from the Covid-19 pandemic. However, it is not only important that we merely recover from the pandemic, but that we recover... but that we recover in a way that is supportive and sustainable. Our budget does exactly that. Given the importance of economic recovery, I would like to start by highlighting a couple of items from our package of support for businesses. Across Perth and Kinross, we have witnessed the effect that Covid has had on our businesses. This has been most acutely felt in our hospitality and retail sectors. Sadly, the most visible demonstration of the economic effect a pandemic has caused is on our high streets, many of which now have empty units where thriving businesses once stood. We must do something to support those businesses that have weathered the storm and encourage new investment. Therefore, we have committed £3 million to town centre regeneration. In line with our aspirations for a sustainable recovery, we would hope to see this funding used to support bringing green space and play areas into our centres. This will help make our centres across Perth and Kinross more attractive to residents and visitors alike. However, we know that facilities are also essential to getting people back into our centres. Therefore, we have also restored the year-round council public toilet provision for Creef. This brings it in line with our other major tourist destinations and allows the local business community to focus on recovery. We have been very lucky over the past year that we live in such a beautiful and scenic area. Residents across Perth and Kinross have taken advantage of our lovely countryside for exercise during the restrictions. This has led to our communities' value in these areas more, and it's vital that we protect and enhance our special areas. Therefore, we have allocated £50,000 to explore the creation of an Oak Hill Regional Park and to consider the expansion of the Lowman Hills Regional Park. A proposed new ranger service, which would work across the whole of Perthshire and Kinrossshire, could support any increased visitor numbers resulting from this new designation. Not all of residents have been lucky enough to take advantage of the outdoors. Many of our older people have been housebound and live alone, which has made the past year particularly hard on them. As we hopefully start to see a return to more normal times, it's important that we support our older residents to get out and about again. Therefore, we have made provision for £75,000 on a recurring basis to support activities for our older people post-Covid. We also want to support our communities to get out and about safely in winter, which is why we have allocated £20,000 to provide new grit bins and push-along gritters. This money will allow residents in streets currently without grit bins to request one. By providing this money on a recurring basis, the network of grit bins and push-along gritters can expand year on year. As you will have noticed, access has been a significant theme of our budget. Therefore, we have made a new provision of £25,000 on a recurring basis to support community transport initiatives. By providing recurring funding, we are ensuring that new initiatives can be given multi-year financial support. We have also allocated money for dropped cabs to ensure our streets can be made more accessible. This is something in my ward that we have been in desperate need of. But access is not exclusively about transportation and infrastructure. People need to feel safe when they are out and about, and that is why we have provided £40,000 for new community safety measures in Creef in the forum of additional CCTV. The lockdown restrictions also saw a significant rise in domestic abuse, putting additional pressures on essential support services for the victims of this awful crime. Our budget therefore makes provision for an additional £20,000 for Perthshire women's aid on a recurring basis to help take financial pressure off this important charity. We know that young people are critical to our future, and therefore it is essential that they get the best possible start in life. We are ensuring that funding for breakfast clubs is not only for one year, but is made permanent. We have committed £75,000 on a recurring basis to ensure our young people have the security of knowing this essential provision will not be removed. We have also rejected the proposed cut to adult literacy. This is an important service in normal times, but it's an essential one for our post-Covid recovery. With a huge rise in unemployment as a result of the pandemic, it's vital that we give all our citizens the skills they need to secure employment and support our recovery. The papers in front of you have the full detail of our budget. It is a budget focused on supporting our communities and ensuring we build back a better Perth and Kinross. Provost, I commend this amendment to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brock. Now, are there any other or any further amendments? No? Okay, I'm now going to hand you over to Scott. Scott, good lord, I've forgotten his name. So Scott's going to go over the lunch arrangements and the arrangements for the senior officers. Scott, Henry.
Thank you, Provost. I was going to say Scott will suffice, but thank you. So just to remind members that the process from going forward now, that the time's 12:15, so there'll now be a lunch break until 1:15 for an hour, followed by a further one-hour recess. So we will formally start back in the main meeting at 2:15. Members will be aware that they were sent individual teams invites for group meetings during the recess. So I think they were set up from one o'clock, but they can be joined at any point, either before one o'clock or after one fifteen, once you've finished the lunch. Again, members were sent a list of officers that are available during the recess. You're two groups to call in if they wish, and if any groups want a reminder of that, we can reissue that by email. So members will see that following the recess, there is a full council part two in their calendar that was originally in from two o'clock, but we will start the formal meeting again at 2:15. Finally, we're aware from some councillors who've asked for support, still having any issues with the chat function. Colleagues from IT, I think, have already contacted, but if anybody else is experiencing any issues, if they could let us know at this point, and colleagues from IT will be able to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. Any other questions, Scott? No.